This can put in tab three. That's what the number in the corner is for, you can put that in tab three behind. This one you can probably put.
I'm doing.
Oh, you just gave us that in there.
Oh, tab three.
Yeah.
Oh, I gave you the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
Let me just make sure it says SB two, not town meeting.
Oh, it does say town meeting.
So, need to replace it. I gave you the wrong ones.
That goes up front?
Yeah, it's just info. So, this one goes in agendas.
Yep.
Um, I gave you the wrong one. I gave you traditional town meeting, so scrap this one.
There you go.
Same with you.
Good, good.
Scrap that whole.
This one?
Yep, the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Yeah, I gave you the wrong. This one says traditional town meeting, we're SB two, so different set of meetings.
So, this one also? No.
Nope, not the agendas. Just these. This one, I think, is tab twenty-eight is revenue.
Yeah, it's not in there?
Yep, revenue. Reading material, twenty-eight.
And this just goes in the sun?
Yeah, it's just miscellaneous, wherever you want to put your miscellaneous. Twenty-four. I put that in the top corner.
These must have been fun to put together.
And on yours and Sunny's, the account code for the fire had gotten cut off, so this is a revised, um, for today. What were you saying?
This must have been fun to put together.
Oh, God, yeah. The mic that was very helpful. Um, do you wanna stuff? Yeah, you can answer for her for me? And that'll help Sunny. So, Sunny, I have some additions for your book. So, I tried to put the numbers, so this will go with tab nine.
Okay. Try to remember that. Municipal appropriations.
So, when we get to that section, you can, so you don't lose it. So, that goes in twenty-nine. I mean, that goes in nine. This section is eight. So, this one is. Tab three. There you go, that way.
I pushed on it, but it didn't seem to work.
But this one, I'm just gonna swap out real quick. Pop the bottom. Oh, my three-hole punch, these on the wrong. There you go.
Nah, half on.
Yeah, here we go, have another one.
Another one?
Recycle.
All right, I think everyone's good, so. And how we did the, um, um, the table of contents, we go in order of how we visit everybody. So, you don't have to be like, oh, wait, go to five, go to seven, go to ten, so.
This is much better. This is gonna be much better for the budget.
And if you're, and if you need to go alphabetical, you can do alphabetical. We gave you some options.
Go shit out.
All right, um, so, do you want me to turn your recording?
Are we all set? I think so. And then I will open the meeting by saying this. Making a statement. Ew, and now I got charts. Really fancy. Recording in progress. Okay, it's good afternoon. I was gonna say good morning, it's good afternoon. Um, the Board of Selectmen is holding these budget works- workshops to discuss budgets with our department heads. While these meetings are open to the public, they are workshop meetings and not intended to solicit public comment. The Board may, at their discretion, accept some public comment, but they are not required to do so. The public may make public comments on the budget at the public hearing, which will be held in January after the Budget Committee review. Good morning, everyone. We're going to start our budget process with the Fire Department. That is under Section One. And I guess Chief, um, you're here to present.
I will also add that I have my computer with the live version of our spreadsheets, so any changes we make, I can do in real time what that, what that impacted on the budget. If you have any questions.
Okay.
I will also add that, um, when we produced the budget worksheets, they were all printed nine-nineteen. So, I have also updated on my side the actuals of what has been spent as of yesterday. It's very, it's a lot of work to have to, you know, update the expenditures every week and reprint and reprint.
Yep.
So, if you do have a question on a line and where we are truly at today, or when I had updated the actuals, I do have them out of yesterday.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Chief, stop one's off? I know that Alicia could put us in for one oh eight. Uh, one oh eight, one oh one, she put me in for, I actually asked to go up to one sixteen. I did, and I don't know if you guys have this, well, I'm here.
Yes.
I did kind of get a general idea of where they're at, and I still was kind of below everybody. Along with my assistant chief, which I, him being, him and I being, you know, it's a non-farmy, um, section right now. I asked him up to ninety-four. Alicia gave me a to and from, but I don't quite know where our to and from is as far as, like, I don't know what's in between, but you take the number of steps in the middle of our steps.
You had originally requested one nineteen, and one nineteen wasn't on our scale, so I said that to be on the scale, if you're trying to get to one nineteen, one sixteen is an actual step, so.
Well, what?
That's where I put you guys. And same with kids who had requested more than ninety-five, and him on, that's again, wasn't on the scale.
Basically, I took a percentage because I never, I, I don't have the list of the full scale, so I didn't know how our scale would go.
Where would you get the list?
I don't know. Alicia. Which I've got the to and from, I just didn't, I don't have any in the middle anymore, or any, I don't have, I didn't have it in the middle. So, I just took a, I put in a percentage and did the same for both of us, which actually got us up close to what, um, other departments are within our area and also within our size and call line that we're doing. So, that was that. The rest is from down until, um, one eighteen, where he's, those, both of the rest of their bargaining anyways, so their, their salaries are all set with contracts.
Those are the, the new requested with the agreement, the wage increase agreement that went through last year at town meeting. So, it's.
Okay, so.
I was saying, can I ask a question on the, on the process?
Yeah, okay.
Are we gonna go through the whole budget and then discuss, or are we gonna go line and discuss?
Well, typically, okay, the Budget Committee, if, if we wanna do it the way the Budget Committee, which I like that, they will take line items, say zero one four four two zero one oh one, two zero one four two two zero one one nine. That's all the salaries. And then we discuss that, all right? Kind of do it a section at a time, and I think that works fairly well. Um, if you'd like to do it the way that we've done it with the Budget Committee, all right? Is that all right? Okay, so, is that, is everyone in agreement with doing it in sections? All right, would you like a, um, little, um?
I got a notebook. I got a notebook.
You got a notebook?
Oh, for a divider.
Yeah, well, just so you can put it across where it ends, all right? So, basically, what we're discussing is, um, uh, pay raises as far as, um, and new positions that are requested. So, um, questions in regards to this section that we chose for the chief?
Oh, the change in the call salary, it was my, I just didn't understand how we haven't spent much of it, but we need to increase more than what we budgeted last year that got shot down.
Uh, well, I'm kinda planning to fold here, which I can drop it back down again. I dropped it down last year because we kind of only had a couple of call guys that were coming out. I have since brought on three new call members, hoping that they will start to become active. I wanted to kind of bring it back up. But it is one of my flexible ones that really could go down and be the, um, I am trying to be proactive with call members to bring them in. Um, unfortunately, it's a huge demand on a call person to, um, come out on their days off, because they're working a full-time straight job, and then they've gotta come out on off-hours to run calls, and that's about an hour to two hours depending on the type of call. So, really, it's very limited on what I get back for people. But I am trying to boost that up, but it is one of my, I just basically put it back up to where it was the year before it went into default. It's definitely one that would be knocked down. Cause you're right, I am, I'm not even quite halfway through that one last month.
Training pay.
That I'm trying to increase because for one, um, that was one of the biggest pushes that Benny had put in his book of whatever, stating that we need to get more out there, so I'm trying to get more, I'm trying to get these guys to go out and be more interactive with, with training, sorry. Um, and giving them the proper training that they need to get into promotions, whether it be officer, officer one of that, so, fire inspector classes, things like that. These are the classes that benefit the department, and we pay them the overtime for it.
So, when you're paying a full-time fireman to go to Concord to train or wherever they're going, they receive their regular pay, and then this is the overtime pay?
Well, what this will cover is, say, you know, firefighter A is going out training today, this class happens to be today. I have to hire someone to come in and fill that. So, we're paying that person the overtime for that. And this just helps cover, and it's been, we have the two sections. We have the, we have the overtime pay for, over, I'm sorry. We have the overtime pay for training, and then we have the pay for training classes. So, I have to fill people if they're going in on their days they're working. If these are mandatory classes they need, RTPs for research for their, or their EMS stuff, fire classes that they need to get continued through their career, then these are the classes that we pay for them to do that. And some of this is also contractual that we pay for their classes.
Okay, and if there's, if they're in the station and they're doing, um, classes online at the computer, when they're, it's on their day that they're working?
They don't get paid extra.
Okay.
No, no, no. This is only when they're not working.
Okay.
Like, if the, the crew today is out training right now, they're self-training.
Okay, cause they're, they're working, they're working.
They go out and they train.
Okay, so not all training is paid above and beyond?
This is above and beyond.
Okay. All right.
Besides discussing the two salary changes that was brought forward, the only question I had would be about the two new firefighters. Us having that grant gonna be expiring. I don't know if bringing on two now would be good for us, cause then we're gonna have to pay, potentially get rid of these two grant positions, or bring them on, which would now add four people in two years. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about there.
Well, the only, so, here's the thing right now, and I do have another caveat towards the bottom with overtime. So, right now, I've got two shifts with four, two shifts with three. And if you go back to, um, chart I have here with our multiple calls that we've been having, with two people, with four people on a shift, I can handle two calls at a time. Which then takes care of not having to call in extra people to come in and cover these shifts, and most of these extra people are gonna be full-time staff, which is gonna create overtime. And our call line, if you look through twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, we're already above where, um, these calls, like back in twenty-two. Twenty-three created a bigger year, so percentage-wise, we're already, and this was actually, I don't even have September's numbers in there, um, cause we just finished that one. So, we're probably pretty close to where I was last year at one sixty-eight total, probably pretty close to that at this point, which we're not bringing in overtime on two shifts. If I have a shift of three on, I have to have, no matter what, I have to have two people on any of those. So, that means I have to call someone back in. If myself or the chief are out doing inspections or in meetings like this today, then people get called in. We do offset some days when there's three on. We will come in, or we will take calls if we're not doing something that we're already committed to. My goal is truly to keep that, two other grant positions on, so that I have four across the board. We'll have four twenty-four seven. At nighttime, I'm not getting anybody to come back, and we're having to call mutual aid, but mutual aid guys are just running just as much as we are. So, and I, you know.
So, you're taking these two new positions, you're talking, well, it would be over a hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Because this doesn't include benefits or anything. And then what you're saying is, next year, when the grant runs out?
I would like to push for.
You wanna add another hundred thousand plus benefits to the Fire Department? Wow, okay.
I wanted to do it, I, I was hoping to be able to do this last year, and then just things kind of just all in.
Chair, on the back of your second page, I have what your total increase would be to your budget if you took on those two new firefighters. Is a, uh, I, three of the numbers, I think you have one eighty-six.
One eighty-seven, yeah.
Two more firefighters?
Yep.
One eighty-seven or one eighty-six, do you have?
So, by adding two, two new firefighters, it comes to about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand?
Yes, and that's, and I went with, um, that's for their life insurance, for disability, a two-person, I went middle of the road, two-person dental plan and a two-person medical plan. That's for their FICA, the med, either retirement. So, for two people, that's your impact on the budget as a total at one eighty-seven.
So, in two years, it could add over three hundred thousand dollars, if not more, because of regular increases. Uh, we are in our, twenty-twenty-five is the second or third year of the union contract?
Twenty-five is the last year of your contract, we'll be entering, and, no.
Yeah, but you start, we start, we start twenty-five to do negotiations for twenty-six. Okay, and we know that's not gonna go down, okay.
I just, that's been my goal, is to get four shifts.
I guess my other concern is, is that that building is only so big.
Well, right now, we're still, we're running with four people on a shift twice.
So, and, okay.
And we have no issues. We got plenty of sleeping, we've got plenty of bathroom space, and we discussed this last time when I got the grant set, we still were kind of, but.
Now, I'm not gonna, I'm not, you know, I don't like to have to discuss people with their sitting in front of me, but that's okay. Mr. Pickwicks, how long has he been employed by the town?
Uh, a little over six months.
So, he just had a six-months review? So, in six months, and you're asking for a, um, or you've requested almost an eight-thousand-dollar pay increase? Am I correct? Did I add that right? Help me, guys.
And that was my request.
That's, and I understand that, but I just, I just, that's all right. I'm just, I.
I think for the work he's been doing and picking up everything that.
I totally understand.
Where I left off, um, it took me.
I, I just, myself?
Nope, I get it.
Myself, all right, and nothing? I understand you're doing a great job, and I'm not trying to, all right? I know that there was some, um, requests made when you were hired to get certain, um,
And he is.
Further your education. And I guess my question to you is, where are we with that?
He's gotten his, um, officer certification, will be going in any spot, he's gotten his instructor classes. He's finishing up his officer, he will be doing his inspector. And that's really the ones that we pushed for him to get the share.
Okay, all right.
He is right on track with all of that stuff.
All right, and I'm not trying to pick on you, I don't, I, I, the Fire Department has a way of, of throwing me under the bus, and I'm only asking these questions because if I don't, they'll end up on Facebook and it will be worse, okay?
I, um, I, I have been keeping tabs on where he's going and stuff.
So, in other words, you're, you're looking for two raises for this gentleman, am I correct? Uh, cause you, you, you want him to go from eighty-seven, uh, to ninety, and then you wanna, then you wanna give him up to ninety-four.
I'm kinda trying to get him to the base of what starting salaries are at the local fire departments at this point. He was, he started.
What I'm getting at too is six months, and then you're looking for two raises, that's, that's kind of extreme, don't you think?
Well.
It is extreme, but I'm trying to get our pay scale up to comparable to where even, um, the Loudoun Deputy Chief is, makes ninety-three thousand. And that's their starting pay. So, I'm trying to at least get them, I'm trying to get him and myself, for that matter, up to at least the starting pays. I mean, Deputy Chief of Laconia, granted, it's Laconia, but they've got two deputy chiefs, and their base pay is a hundred and nine thousand, that's what they're making.
But we can't compare Belmont to Laconia.
I understand that, but he does the exact same job that these two deputy chiefs are doing with inspections and all of that stuff. So, they're doing the same jobs, and we have just as much as inspections as Laconia does. We've got the falls going crazy, we've got buildings that are going up in, in Aiden Circle finally finishing up. We've got, um, Grimstone, the wildlife, uh, acres, I forget about what's continuing. So, he is out doing inspections, and I finally have gotten my part of it just pushed over him, cause he's doing the most. Other than some little ones that I'm just kind of finishing up that I still had on the back burner and those different base stuff.
I can understand, I can understand where you're going, but I can't support that, but that, that's just me, so.
Like I said, I, and granted, I've got Laconia on here, but I also have, um, Bristol, their small department. Samberdin, well, he doesn't have, he doesn't have a part, he only has a part-time deputy, cause they're very small. But the Guilford Deputy Chief, they do the same, granted, right.
But again, Laconia is a city, Guilford is a lakefront, waterfront, we know. And obviously, he came to work for us at, at the rate that we offered him, all right? We are, we are, how do I say? We are educating him, and we are fine-tuning him in a position that he didn't have all the qualifications at that point, what he is getting. And in six months, I have an issue with an eight-thousand-dollar increase. Um, God, I wish I had half a quarter of that.
Like I said, I, I'm trying to get.
And I understand what you're.
So, but the same thing is too, Chairman, that we, like, we sat, for instance, in these, um, the oral boards that you got in. And, excuse me, and we still were at the way bottom, we were, we were below everybody else that has been applying for these jobs.
I understand.
And we still, you know, and I'm not saying that we, we settled, by far did we settle.
No.
Um, and I think we made a very good decision. But I'm looking at other fire departments right now too, that are hiring assistant chiefs or deputy chiefs, for that matter, for the hundred and three thousand dollars, hiring them as a base step. But we brought him in at eighty-seven, something like that?
It was eight, I, I think it's eighty-seven, one sixty-seven.
I don't know, something like that.
Yep.
Um, for a base step. I came in at seventy-nine for a base step, with all sorts of experience and qualifications, and certi- qualifications, certifications, and all that stuff, and I still came in at seventy-nine. So, I'm still trying to get this department to kind of come up a little bit more towards everybody else's. That's just kind of where I'm going with it. And I get that, yes, it's a huge jump, I get it. Um, but we're trying to get the best we can get, and, you know.
I, I understand that too. My biggest fear is us not being able to present a budget that will get passed. I'm worried about having a default, and then the entire town screwed at that point. We're, we're screwed if we have a default again.
You know, this default budget.
That's my biggest fear, is not being able to present a budget.
And my fears fall under too. And, but if I don't sit and present my case on this, then ten dollars an hour is gonna be the best for everybody. And that, we're trying to get.
The unfortunate thing is when we look at all of this, the, I mean, obviously, Town Hall is very important, because we wouldn't get the revenues if Town Hall wasn't open, but, you know, the Fire Department, people don't realize, it's all fine and good to support the Fire Department, but without the Police Department and without the Highway Department, you guys aren't moving, okay? So, it, it's all intertwined, so in my, you know, I, I know that, that different departments feel they're far more important than other departments, but when I look at all of the departments as a whole, okay, God forbid if I need an ambulance tomorrow, but if I look at all the departments of, as a whole, all right, one helps the other, and one is just as important as the other.
So, if you wanna put it in that perspective, uh, the Police Department's number two makes a lot more than that.
He's worked here for over twenty years.
And he's done fifteen years in the fire service. So, I get, I mean, it's kinda.
I understand, but I guess, I guess we're selfish. This is the town of Belmont, all right?
Yeah, but everybody kind of trains everybody to go somewhere to better the place.
Yep.
I mean.
I mean, I would give him the same pushback if Steve came in and wanted. That's different, another step on top of the original step two, so don't take it as me trying to be personal. I'm, last year, I sat back and watched the budget process. This year, I'm more into an understanding, so I have a lot more questions about it. That's more or less where I'm coming from. I'm gonna do the same thing to every department. Unfortunately, it's gonna be that way this year for me, cause we need a budget to pass, and I'm so scared not to.
I, and I totally agree, and I just, like I said, I'm, I'm, my concerns right now are, are my people, my, you know, and the Fire Department in general.
Yep.
And getting us to kind of where everybody else around us is, because.
That's your job.
At least you gotta help, and that's my job, and I'm trying to get the best people in here to do the job.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna be in the same situation with the Fire Department as we're gonna be with the police at some point, with not having staff.
And, and knock on wood, other than retirement this year, I'd like to think we've done pretty well. Um, for the past years before I was the chief, um, we were hiring every couple of weeks, or attempted to hire every couple of weeks. And I think that has stopped, or at least slowed it right down.
Can we just go back up to the other little red, the twenty-three thousand fifty-one? Is that just because that, that person was a new hire and filling a position that paid higher? Why?
Yeah, so we.
What, why, oh, my red.
Are you low?
Then Ryan went into his position, so there was a, um, a gap in pay.
All right, got it. So, that's just the.
And then Corolla moved into Ryan, so that's why.
All right, it's just kind of a change in, okay.
Yeah, they moved up.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, their line items.
Line items.
Ryan went to Murphy's line, you know?
And Corolla went to one oh nine.
Corolla went to, yes.
So, it's just a change.
And because these are the budget that was passed and the lines that are passed, they don't mess around with what was approved.
Yep.
And that way, you also can see, like, if you had a savings, because of movement as well.
Or, or vacancy or whatever. Got it, okay. Do I have any other questions in regards to this section? I forgot. It went right out of my head.
I went down the bottom of testing, uh.
No, we're gonna take another section.
Huh?
We're gonna do another section.
Oh, I thought you were doing.
No, we're gonna go, start from the holiday. No, we're gonna go start from the holiday pay, which is, no more questions on this section, okay? So, we will move to zero one four two two zero one two zero and we'll go right to the bottom of the page. Zero one four two two zero-
I have many numbers on my-
That's your new page, Sunny, in there.
Oh, he doesn't.
No, I don't have one on my-
Oh, he doesn't have the-
That's cause he has Sunny's new page.
Did you get two of them now?
Doesn't appear that way, but just give me, let me give him this back, this Sunny.
All right, look at this page. So, we're going to go from right here down to the bottom. That's, those are the items we're gonna discuss.
What number you starting at?
We're starting out at the holiday pay, right underneath, right there, right there to the bottom of the page. Not some of this.
John, get this all scribbled up.
John, does the-
I would want, if you're, if you're moving past his wages and salaries, are you, are you accepting her request for the two new firefighters? Or are you not accepting her request of the two new firefighters?
I'd vote against it myself.
Do we wanna do, like, are we doing?
Do we do, do we do a motion for that or, I, I, I mean, I don't know, we've never, I don't know, we've kind of just-
I, I would need your, cause your column, I would need to put whether you're, you know, putting money into it or not, putting money, so this budget-
I could understand taking one new fire at this point, but I think two right now would be very hard, especially those two grants running up next year. It'd make me extreme and there is taking two new one now and then having to pay for the two grants next year. I think if we take one on now, that'd give you four and four, right?
No.
No, no, because they, no, because they have to have-
Two great positions, if I bring in, if I hire two, I'll have four and four, I'll four across the board.
So, where are you sitting at right now? Like, what's your shifts?
I have two, I have two shifts of four and two shifts of three.
Oh, oh, okay, I, I miss, I thought-
So, these two positions would then make, I think twenty, I think it's twenty-six, four at the end of twenty-six.
So, sorry, I have to bring in two.
Chairman, what's your thought?
Um, well, I would not vote for two. I think I'm with Travis on that. I would maybe vote for one, but that also depends very heavily on what we do with the chief and the assistant chief's salaries.
At the moment, I would, if it was me, as far as the salary goes, I would recommend the administrative, um, step um, for both, but that's only me. And, um, I can't support two new positions at this point personally, that's only me.
You're voting yes on the two salary increases?
I'm voting on this salary.
Yeah.
This, where, um-
Okay, not this one, not, not this out here, okay.
That would be my, that's me.
And I agree with that, so.
It just, and again, we're running, we have it, we're trying to get a budget pass and I'm just scared of adding too much.
You gotta be scary.
That's my position.
I'd like to get a-
John?
I have an administrative question.
Okay.
Uh, using this discussion that you two just have, and I pretty much agree with you. But when this hits, this budget, this proposal right here is gonna be a corrected one of what we recommend to the budget committee, or is it gonna be this one, but the selectmen recommend a different one?
So, you have heard, heard the request and then whatever you guys say today and go down or approve will go in the select, in the selection column and then that gets put forward to the budget committee.
So, the budget committee, when they look at this, they, they know what we supported and they may not, they may support something different.
Yeah, yeah. The budget committee may support, they want two and they want the higher pay.
Or you may support one and they say, they say no, and they may, they were gonna cut, you know, you know, have no funding. And if you would cut twenty percent, I don't know, but their intentions may be this year.
Travis?
I am at the point that I, I think we should go with the normal administrative step. Just, I understand how much has been put in, it's just a lot for us to try and get through the pass, but I really think adding one firefighter at least would help at this point. I can't see doing two, for sure.
Yeah, I think the administrative step for the deputy is good, especially only, and I'm only saying that because you've only been employed by the town of Belmont for six months. And taking the job, cause you were lieutenant at your last firehouse, right? So, it's kind of like, it's already a promotion with a pay increase and you're gonna get another pay increase and it's only been six months. Um, I probably may totally feel different next year, but that's where I'm at right now. Um-
I want you to know I take great pride being here and I hope to be here for a long time.
And we appreciate what you've done and there's nothing, right, and, and we want-
This is a new position this year. I mean, we have been the oldest setting selectmen for, not in age, but in time sitting here for a very long time. And last year, and I will be damned if this year if I don't go to the budget meeting, says I wanna see who's voting. And I will call, I'm gonna call the three gentlemen that vote, told people at the election day to vote no. I'm gonna call them out at that meeting and I wanna call my favorite joint meeting between the two, I'd call them right before us. Two of those gentlemen were employees of the town of Belmont and left of their own court, one retired. So, we must have been some good for them for a while. So, I, I couldn't, I can't believe that they did this after they said at the budget committee and voted yes, yes, and yes, and then stood outside the voting, we didn't tell them, the statement was, if you don't know, vote no. And I think that's just backwards. And I'd be happy to tell them that, and I will.
If we had a deep vote last year, I could feel so much better with this, but I'm so-
Because the, the town's gonna say, you did it last year, you can do it again this year. Well, you can't. The increases that you're entitled to, the increases that, you know, it's like the firemen, I think we do probably need them. I don't, I wouldn't doubt you, that's your profession. But will they, we gotta look at their dollar values and they're all bragging about what their homes are priced for, but then they don't wanna pay the taxes on the home.
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, um, uh, go with the, go with the, the administrative step of a hundred and eight thousand one oh one thirty-six for Deb, for the chief, sorry, probably shouldn't use names. And go with the administrative step of ninety thousand six fifty-three seventy-eight for the assistant chief. And, um, I'm going with, um, no two, no new positions added.
Can we just separate that then between the-
You either vote yes or no.
Well, I don't wanna vote no in one part.
Oh, you wanted, oh, okay, all right, so, let's just go with that too. Um, do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, what are we voting on?
The, the-
Oh, the two salaries, yeah, no. No, okay, so you're voting against paying those salaries.
Well, okay, wait, no, so, I, I'm voting-
Which was to agree with the administrative step, so you-
Yes, okay, so I'm agreeing to the administrative step raises, okay.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition?
Then I just also add for the record, the administrative step wasn't my recommendation.
No, it is part of the-
Yeah, when you say administrative, I mean, step scale.
Yeah, so every employee can lose a step in April if the board, um, approves of step increases.
Got it.
So, that is just what two, what those two, what those two positions were going to step in naturally in April. Just so it's clear that it wasn't, me, another suggestion from me, just-
Okay, no, I understand.
Whenever I use the word administrative step, I mean the scale that is provided by the town.
Yes.
Um, and then I will make a motion to, um, I'll make a motion to not hire an additional two people at this time for, um, as presented.
I'll second that.
Repeat that again, what, how did you word that?
I'm not sure how I worded that, if I worded it correctly. Um, I'm making the motion to not hire two additional firefighters at this time.
Maybe not add two new, maybe not add two to the budget and twenty-five two new additional-
Basically, she's voting no on article oh one four two two zero dash one one eight and oh one dash four two two zero dash one one nine.
There you go.
Okay.
Got it proper.
There.
Let's go, gonna play the game, let's get in the ballpark.
There we go. And, um, Sunny, seconded that, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
I oppose.
You oppose? So, Travis and Sharon oppose and we-
So, three, two, one, passed.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Now, we're going to move on to the next session, section, which ends in one two zero down to three one nine. I will ask for any questions.
So, my question is the, um, three fourteen down to three nineteen, those are the ones that will fluctuate because it's insurance. So, those, at the bottom, the bottom four rows.
Well, really, three ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it shows down here.
Yeah, three ten to three nineteen, we have no control over. That's FICA, Medicare insurance.
Okay.
And at this point, we don't really have the exact insurance numbers yet, that will come.
Yeah.
So, your FICA won't change, your med won't change, your life, um, those, and your, um, I think your retirement is on the backside. Those won't change because, um, those are the wages that are already in the contract. The only thing that will change is the health insurance, the health and, uh, and the dental, the life insurance for disability.
Did you calculate the two new positions into FICA?
Um, yeah, okay.
So, that wouldn't change for those two?
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
They will change, yes, because you've removed them, but you don't know what the board, the budget committee will still do, so.
Yeah, I'm just, in general, they will, they don't. Quick question about the overtime. I see that's gone down dramatically, which is good. Um, do you, what do you think that will be at the end of the year though? Do you think the one, like, going up to one thirty is that?
Well, um, I have a girl out now on maternity leave and she will be out until April, and well, she's in April, so we'll get past that. Well, she's working light duty right now, so we are filling her shift. So, my overtime is gonna go back to the loop for that one, so.
So, what is she doing for light duty?
Oh, filing administrative filings, stuff like that.
Hmm.
If it's run out of work for her, she'll go work for Alicia.
Craig already talked versus. He's got filing too.
Okay.
Aren't you having her do inspections as well?
Yeah, she is doing inspections, she's doing, she'll do fire drills, she'll do, um, October's fire prevention month, she'll be out doing that stuff. She's busy.
What do you have on the bunch list for the repairs at the station?
Um-
Besides everything?
Besides everything, um, well, I need to get my garage door openers back up to, um, I have three more garage door openers that are outdated from the other ones at this point and have been kind of, they've been kind of nickel and dime on them. They're, we have doors that we don't necessarily use all the time, which I guess is a good thing, but I do need three more to keep that up. To get those back up, which was kind of a continued plan that the previous chief had started working on. I do have three garage doors that will be replaced sooner than later and those are like seven grand apiece. They don't have parts for those, the tracks are coming off. Some of, some of them have been pulling away from the walls, we kind of go and fix ourselves, so we're gonna do that.
You mean the, the motor part for the door openers? You mean you just got a-
Those, those are gonna, I want, I need a few more I want to replace on the door openers themselves, like electronic door openers.
Yeah, got it.
Kind of running on them last week.
Yeah.
Um, and those have probably been there since the beginning of the station.
Probably.
I do have several doors, the ambulance door, I figure that's probably the one that's used the most.
The most.
One of the engine doors, which is used the second most, and our back bay door, which is probably the third most, that they're slowly starting to need to be replaced. There are some parts that I've had to have replaced on them.
The rolls.
Kind of people, rollers, the springs, I've had several springs replaced on them now, I've also had several. And I don't know the terminology, but the little cable that's linked them up to bring them up that is snapped. These doors are pretty heavy to lift by yourself.
Yeah, yeah. I have a big one at my barn and I had to do the rollers and stuff.
I do have three that are desperate need of being replaced.
Yeah, so it's just wear and tear basically. And I assume they're aluminum, they're aluminum or whatever they are, probably insulated or-
There's someone, yeah, they are insulated, I mean, granted, there's, there's a draft through there anyways, just because garage doors, but, um-
So, if you have to replace, if you have to replace three of them at seven thousand each, there's not enough money?
Well, I had gotten the prices after I had set this up and I didn't talk to the chef about getting some, where I was at and some stuff needing to do. So, yes, you're right, I certainly did not have a problem now, I had it. And I actually didn't even foresee being able to get that one to a certain percentage, so. I guess I'm more or less on the garage doors, just hoping they kind of wheel through and make it, and maybe they, they'll fill them up right now.
Okay. All right.
Cause I also have a mold issue going on and we just took care, and hopefully these situations have been mitigated. But, um, I came up the other day to help us. We had a room just publicly, just our, our utility room was just chucker block of, of bees, a box, but it went home. And I believe the nest sits between our outside wall and inside wall and he spent the day down there doing some stuff. We got some stuff sprayed in there. Down, I mean, we probably, these are the floor of the next day, they're still sold, coming up, but I can only imagine the size of that.
Yellow jackets? I'm dealing with that too. Let me know how it works out, cause I gotta yellow jacket.
I have a benefits question.
So, in reality, the station repair line is too low.
Oh, yeah. What number is that on?
Yeah, it's line number two oh one.
That would be two one oh, uh, is it?
Two oh one.
No, two oh one, I'm sorry, two oh one. So, in reality, that's too low if we want to even do the doors at this point.
Yeah, cause you're looking, I need a garage door, the opener itself is probably about a thousand dollars, so that's like, we'll call it four thousand dollars to replace three door openers. The door itself is about seventy-five hundred dollars.
And you have a quote, have you received a quote for those?
I've gotten one quote.
Where did you get that from?
It's called door up, he's been taking care of our other door openers that have been, um, breaking.
I would probably suggest you get a quote for- Okay, good. All right, good. I think that that would be, yes, I think that would be a, um, Craig, who takes care of your doors? That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's typically, is that one of your?
Uh, it's a fellow at Meredith and-
Right, late, it was a company.
Okay, all right.
And I forgot what overhead door I was putting in.
Yeah, I usually use them for the big door, yeah. They tend to be pretty responsive, pretty competitive. Um, so I guess we can put-
I have a quote, I have one quote so far, I'm still working.
All right, so I think what's, can we just put a question mark on that? Because if we're gonna replace three doors, fifteen is not gonna replace those doors.
If, if she's gonna replace three doors.
Yes, she needs to replace three doors.
So, you can either increase your budget or you can take it from the municipal facilities capital reserve as well.
Oh, you can?
You could.
Oh, all right, but, but again, okay, all right, okay.
Well, anyway, we did half the doors this year and half the doors next year, you know, we eased the pain a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, a couple of them have taken a few shots this year.
And that's not even one of my bad ones, but, so, I mean, like I said, if I could get, I would love to get three of the door openers, which, and this is just the one quote I have, for three would be forty-six hundred dollars, forty-seven hundred dollars, we'll just call it. And the door itself is seventy-five fifty-six apiece if we were to do the doors. And I do have, like I said, I've got three that are really, that I, and my number one door really to be replaced is my ambulance door. Just because that is the one that gets-
What's in our municipal building fund? Do we know that? Thank you.
I mean, I have, and again, I'm not, my barn isn't a fire ambulance, but I had them come in and re, recondition and rollers and whatever. I mean, I had, and again, I'm not, my barn isn't a fire ambulance, but I had them come in and re, recondition and rollers and whatever, and it was just like brand new. I, I had, actually, I had, no, I didn't dent that, but one of my, one of my sections got dented, and they just took that out and put a new one in, and I've been good to go.
So my understanding for the doors we have now, they don't make those doors anymore, so they don't have the sections for them, not a door, this is car.
Well, and I'll be honest with you, mine is about forty something years old, and yes, the, the, it didn't look, it's white, my door is white, and it didn't look exactly the same kind of, whatever, but you, unless you were really looking at it, you couldn't tell the difference, and they just replaced one section on it, and it's been great. My rollers got done, everything, and I, maybe, maybe...
And like, and if, you know, the two other guys, and we'll call overhead, Craig's actually, I will...
Yeah, and it was overhead that did my sections.
If you want me to add, I mean, I, I usually have overhead door, I would take them up every year, they do a tune-up.
Yeah.
And we can, so our bottoms get really rusty, gets a lot of salt, so, like, the last couple of years, we replaced the bottoms on one side and the other side, and they go, you have a motor, just, so it's...
Because everything up above was fine.
It's not a good thing, we just haven't come up and do it through a maintenance thing, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Um, it might be worth looking into.
To answer your question, Travis, we have six hundred and seventy three thousand in that account, which, I don't know, you're, you're marking some of those lines.
Get to bathe in soup ready with one convocation.
I also removed, for you guys, if you're, if you want, I removed those two firefighters and all of those benefits that would go along with them, so we removed numbers.
Oh, why don't we, just hold it, just, yeah, just hold it till the end.
Yeah, because that would affect, uh, equipment, clothing assistants, uh, physicals.
I don't think, I did not add them into my physicals, that I didn't add into, I do, physicals has gone up.
And your FICA and, and all that, Medicare, health insurance.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's changed that.
I took all that.
But it also does, it, you know, the uniforms and clothing, it's gonna affect them, because you've got a uniformer, it's gonna affect that line, which is two fifteen. And I do think your station repair is seriously low, and if I've learned anything, and not about you, about your predecessors, when it came to doing maintenance and looking at the vehicles and/or the building, it didn't exist. Unless the door fell off, or the toilet didn't flush, it didn't, because you have flushing problems, been there for not just now, but now.
And this is why I'm trying to move forward and get that stuff fixed.
I think that's a good idea. If I had to put money into something, I'd put it in the station repair. But again, like Craig says, he has these people come once a year and tune them up, and then...
I know nobody's touched the doors except for when they're not working.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's...
Right, and that's, and I've been here for the past five years, so I know that.
But that's a good company to look into, because I know they, that's what they...
And I totally forgot what their name was until he said it, so.
Yeah.
Well, you got an assistant there that won't forget.
No, he won't.
Yeah, I agree with John, if we need to add more to that station repair, I'd be comfortable doing that, because I just, I don't wanna have to build a new building anytime soon. No offense to you guys, I just don't wanna, we can't afford it.
See, not for nothing, a couple of years ago, probably would have been the best time to...
Yeah, not right now, unfortunately.
Station repair.
But we should have done that one, at least probably be built.
Safety center.
Well, that and the stats, that got voted down years ago, believe me, we already tried that. We spent a lot of money in a beautiful design and couldn't go anywhere with it.
Because that would be the most beneficial of the department.
Yeah, because that'll change a lot, too, conditions, it's gonna change all these, right, all your insurance, everything's on it.
Well, I don't know, the repair bill that we get for their next repair is eleven thousand dollars, so.
Well, that's coming with something else.
Well, I know, but it wouldn't not necessarily always do so.
Like, let me ask, let me just, and, and not to try to, but you've put fifteen thousand dollars into, um, uniforms and clothing, okay? We just voted, and I, and I noticed you've all, you've carried twelve last year, obviously, the default, that was the default.
Yeah.
Okay, so is it...
Even the request was twelve.
Yeah. Do you need fifteen in that? Well, it's...
Well, I kind of went in with a buffer, because we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and in a, in a selectman's meeting was the new PFAS thing, and they're trying to...
Oh, that's exactly, yeah, you're exactly right, that, yeah.
They are talking about changing our clothing, so I really don't know, so, in my thought process, and I am not always right, if I'm forced to change something, you'd think that someone would then...
Put out a grant or something, yeah, you're right, because...
We don't do that.
Because that's...
You know, so that's why I did increase that a little bit, because we are, you know, we have to go to different clothing to be...
Did you also say, or did you say that you have to replace your farm's, or is that why you increased them?
Well, we do, so we do replace them when they're...
Or is that the SCUBA or whatever?
When they're PFAS here.
Is that why that's been placed?
Um. Well, I, and then here I did put, we increased by two positions for the, for the uniforms, so we could drop it back now, but I do also have it in there for the PFAS. But, and that's, that's...
I think not knowing about the PFAS stuff, I think, having the buffer is a good idea this year.
Yes. Yeah, good thing. But let's talk about the testing and, what's SCB, SCUBA?
That's the SCUBA.
Yeah, that's, that's our air pack.
That was Mike wants to do.
Oh, that's the air packs, okay, which we did replace that piece of equipment to fill those air packs.
Yeah, SDA system.
Okay, got it. So...
So, what number is that?
I mean, that was four thousand and you've been, you said to ten.
Two ninety seven.
That is two ninety seven.
I'm actually, and coming, I just found out that we, we do have it scheduled for this year to get, to fit test, uh, sorry, not to fit testing, be hydro testing, so I gotta find out how much that's gonna be for this year, and that's what that takes care of, so that one may come down.
Okay, well...
It was supposed to be, they told me it was gonna be next year, but it's, it expired this year, so that...
But my suggestion will be, is if it comes down, to add it to the, um, the building.
Okay.
Wherever it is, wherever it was, I think, I've lost it now. Um, you know, let's just say the ten thousand comes down to eight.
Two oh one.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with taking that two thousand and adding it to that building repair line, knowing that we have doors that are questionable or whatever. That would be my two cents worth on that, but, I mean...
And I still do have to have fit testing for the masks, because every year, people's faces change, older, fatter, I get it. So, they, they have to, they get fit tested every year.
Okay, all right.
Make sure that there's no leaks, just because of the design.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand, okay, all right. Um, is there any other questions in this section?
Sharon?
Nope, I don't have any. Travis?
Uh, I had one with consumers. Oh, and the operating equipment, what's that, the, like, it's a...
Which number is that?
Oh, three oh two. So we spent seven thousand and twenty-four, the request was fifteen and twenty-four, like it is now, but it defaulted to seven, what else is in there that makes it have to be the fifteen?
I didn't, it's, that should have been changed, because I, I have it as, um, I have it as ten, that's mine, which, I, because in that paperwork I gave you guys, it's ten, and here it's state fifteen, yeah, you're on the operating three oh two, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I have it as ten thousand, so I've only increased to three thousand dollars, and then just because our equipment's still, it's slowly getting older, we have SCB, I'm sorry, we have, this takes care of...
Ten thousand's the number I had on my page that I wanted, I thought, no, no, I mean, I, no, no, it says fifteen in my book, but ten thousand's the number I wrote on my side page, I think I would be, feel better with ten thousand.
I had it at... Oh, it does. He must have changed it after with me, but before he was present, so.
Well, I don't think I have it on this one.
Mine, three oh two, is ten.
Uh, well, I can move mine to ten, I'll feel way better, my questions don't avoid at that point.
Hey, mine's a good change.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just wondering about the, the ten to fifteen change.
Yeah, so like I said, I have it on my working, it's ten.
Do you need a motion for us to change it to ten, or is it?
No, she's, no.
No, I have it in.
Okay.
Yeah, because that was an adjustment I sent you the other day.
Ten was my happy number, so I'm good there.
They already have their books.
He's happy.
And because there's ongoing changes with, like, medical and that, we're supposed to accept us presented, well, well, you can, you can imagine to accept us presented with no dollar amount, just because it will change.
Yeah, no, we understand. Yeah. Are there any other questions in that section? No? Sharon?
No, good.
Okay. So let's go to the back pa, well, it's back page for us.
The only question I could have is, oh, nevermind, you said you were gonna keep it for the, the seven buffer, okay.
For the uniforms, yeah, right.
The uniforms.
Yes, yeah, in case of, I would, I would hope if the PFAS thing comes forward, that there's gonna be some federal money, but we all know how that works. Okay, let's do zero one, well, ending in three two zero to nine nine nine.
The whole back page?
The whole back page. Yeah.
So who sets the ambulance billing fees?
Who, that, what?
Who sets the ambulance billing fees? The company that we have that does it?
Line four twenty.
Quick man.
Okay.
My one question on there.
And that is to, the annuals billing pieces are cost to...
Hire them to do that.
Hire them to do the collection and to do the fees for it.
Okay.
Yeah. My only...
They do all that.
Oh, so we pay them?
Yes.
To do...
To manage.
To do that.
We don't go after that, we don't go after the bills or anything.
No, I wouldn't wanna do that.
And who sets the amount of the ambulance fees?
Medicare Medicaid, and I actually just put out a thing, because I wanna look into getting our free, because we're pretty, pretty well.
Okay, because I, I thought you had said that back a while ago.
I just got some paperwork, that another department has already done their homework on it, and I'm gonna utilize their homework and coming that up, so.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
I went to college, I know that, people like someone else or something.
My only question was on seven oh seven, the vehicle repairs, and what we have planned for this year, or is that just a general repair?
This is general. This is kind of neat eating our equipment, and obviously, as we know, things have, uh...
You ain't gotta know.
It's getting worse, and we know, I'm still, I am still waiting from Lake Region Truck, he, uh, chief's been in there on a daily basis to the point where I think he's irritating him about giving us the list of what stuff...
Maybe I'll stop in and see him, because I know him. I mean, it's...
Make him angry.
Just to...
Jeremy, oh, you can make Jeremy angry.
Well, it's been a month and a half.
Well, he's been on vacation, he just got back.
I understand.
He just got back, and I'm sure he's got a ton of stuff.
But he's not alone, I mean, he's got people there, the lady that works on, works for me, I agree, he's sharp.
So. I don't really know, I'm like, do you have a job?
And are you sure fifty thousand dollars in that line is enough?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, but I...
I don't think so.
I think...
How much was the...
I think we're pretty far behind on our equipment right now.
You are. You, you inherited it, and it was...
I know, I bought it, and here I am, so...
Yeah, you, well, we bought it, and here we are.
Yeah, well, I'm the one sitting up here.
But I understand that, because there's some things you gotta catch, maintenance and preventative maintenance has to, has to be forthright going forward.
And we have, we have pretty much set something in motion at this point, not even as of today, but prior to all this happening, well, prior to things getting worse, I have gotten things in, and the more guys I do, the chief I'm working with, lieutenant, I'm getting this stuff moving forward. If he had his way, the truck would be in every single day being, being fixed and worked on.
Well, the next time he crawls in front of, under a truck, and I'm standing there, when he comes out, he's gonna be on one oh six, because I'll grab his leg tied to the back of my truck and tow him down there, because there were no truck, when he got under there, to stick a knife in the battery box that morning, and you were there watching him, laid right on his back on a wet floor, there's no chocks under the truck, none. God forbid it didn't, he didn't start it up, but it had it moved, and he's under it, and to test something that's got a battery in it with a charcoal plastic case and using a jack knife to stick it through the frame that's rusted, that's not good practice.
But yes, we are, we do have something going forward, because I'm thinking we're gonna be stuck with the trucks for a long time at this rate.
Oh, I would think so.
So, John, what do you recommend should be, because I'm not a repair person, all I know is it's expensive. I mean, just to change, let me ask you this, tires. Let's, let's talk tires.
Probably about a hundred dollars, well, tires themselves, I couldn't quote you on tire right now, but it's probably about a hundred dollars a tire to change.
Right.
Just to change.
It's a decline.
I mean, but they're expensive.
Well, that's just the mountain value.
I know, I know, but how much is the tire?
I like my pendel balance.
Well, it depends what you buy it for.
What'd you buy us?
We went to them, we have some breakdown priority, and, you know, most police can start there and keep picking away in the meantime, so, you know, safety is the utmost support.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Oh, it's, people don't understand that as vehicles age, it costs more to keep them on the road, so, and these things are big things to keep on the road, that's for sure. Okay, John, so you're nervous about the fifty not being enough?
Yeah, three hundred, like...
Three hundred, what, oh geez, for repairs?
That fire truck, they just had painted, I could, I could spend without, just looking around it, I could, I could spend thirty five thousand dollars of this town's money on that truck, and you'd never see it. I'm not gonna paint it, I'm not gonna polish it.
You wanna add, you're saying three hundred thousand?
That's how far you're off, because stuff hasn't been done, so you gotta...
No, I, I get that, I totally get that.
You gotta start chipping away at it. It's like the building, we're not gonna fix it all in one year, but, you know, because they look shiny and new. I, again, want you to buy, see Craig, and whatever, wherever they bought that wash system, it'll work in your bay, you don't have to go up there, it's like six, eight hundred bucks to wash the bottom of these trucks.
My goal is to, to get one.
So my question is, you're still waiting for some idea from Jeremy to find out?
That's a big, yeah.
All right, so I guess the question, I guess, we'll need, we need to, before we get done with this, we need to revisit the...
I express the concern for this, and I, but I can't make him do it, you know, I know he's a great guy.
Yes. Yeah, um, you know, let me know, all right, be more than happy to go talk to Jeremy and see if he can, um, bring it forthcoming, okay? Um, let me know, okay? And so that we can give a figuring here, it may have to be, are you ready, Alicia? It may have to be seventy-five, I mean, it may have to be something that's more realistic than fifty, because we don't know what that is.
So we do have your, I think it's the twenty first is maybe your wrap-up, if we wanna add in some, some...
October twenty first, November.
October twenty first.
October.
October, I think, was our, like, cleanup meeting for any last minute additions and changes, so I can, hopefully, they have an answer for you by then, and you can add that back in.
Okay. All right.
Mom and dad working on Jeremy, so we should be, we should be good.
You know, yeah, just, okay, all right. Any other questions on this section? Oh, making some cookies. Um, any other questions on this section, Sharon?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um...
So I do have a total, once you guys are all done.
Yeah, but the total really isn't...
It isn't gonna, it isn't gonna be a total.
I, I don't wanna...
Well, it is you a total with, out the two new firefighters, so it takes into account all minus singles out.
Right.
I will take the total, please, Alicia.
Right.
All right.
Um, so that new total, taking out the two employees, would be two million, two eighty-seven, six, seven, eight.
Um, would you kindly say that one more time?
Two million, two eighty-seven, six, seven, eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's enough for you to run the fire department.
Also, on all of your budget worksheets, you'll see in the bottom, I, this is a new, a new, a new thing for us, dealing with the default, so, what we normally are used to seeing is, what is the increase over last year's budget?
Yeah.
Well, last year's budget is really twenty-three's budget, we're really working and comparing two years of information.
Right. We have two years, right.
So I did both, I gave you a, what does their budget look like over the default, which is the twenty-three budget, and I gave you what their increase, in a normal or not, in a typical world, would have been, had they gotten what they requested in twenty-four.
Sure.
So you see, if, you know, their increase over the default is six percent, their increase over what was requested last year is only two percent.
Yeah, yeah. But again, that's not a true figure yet either, so...
No, no, because you still have, you still have the medical, and dental, the life insurance, disability, and any other changes you may want to add, we'll find you guys just discuss.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Now, the little colored box here?
So the colored box is that warrant article that has been pretty consistent for the last, all the way to field, which equals a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred, so that's been the warrant articles restricting the first X amount of dollars from the ambulance, ambulance special revenue fund.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that just offsets the general funds by that much, you don't, your market to be spent is just an offset to revenue. Ambulance special revenue fund, so that just offsets the general funds by that much, you don't, your market to be spent is just an offset to revenue, um, to the department. The green box is, um, our lease payment that will be a warrant article that we have to make, um, for the ambulance that we purchased last.
And is that one payment that is made in twenty twenty five for that ambulance, or is it made quarterly?
One payment a year.
Okay, so that payment will be made in twenty twenty five, and that's gonna go away?
Nope. So in twenty three, we did the down payment, twenty four, we did our first payment, twenty five, we do our second payment, without a five year lease?
Oh, yeah.
So what, where did I read that something was gonna be paid off?
They tank, uh, the engine.
Oh, the pump, the pumper's gonna be paid off.
She said that, did you find, was that the twenty five, was the final year, you said you were gonna look that up?
Uh, I haven't had time to look up, I have to have Steve tell me who we pay for that. And then we still have one, I think we have one more pumper payment for twenty five, I'm just confirming.
Okay, alright.
So those are the obligations that we have right now, as far as the, the, the.
What is in that account, just, I know that I don't need to know exact number, roughly what is in the ambulance account at the moment? I, I don't need to know.
I think it was like five fifty.
Okay, and we still obvious.
We have all the warrant articles already out of that, Steve?
We did, yeah.
Oh, so, oh, we have taken, okay, so now it's just the general whatever, okay, well, not bad, seeing that we need to deal with.
Yeah.
We might not have made the ambulance payment or the.
The pumper payment?
We haven't done the pumper payment yet, I think this usually comes up for us at the end of the year, and probably, oh wait, you did your B, have you done the ambulance under one oh five?
I have to check.
That's okay, no problem, alright.
So if anything in the A, what he just told you minus one seventy?
Yeah, yeah, so probably at the end of the year, and again, we're just guessing.
And revenue's still coming in.
Right, that's exactly right, so it could be four hundred. It could be four hundred in that account, roughly. Don't quote, but we're just, alright, conversation's safe, okay. What else?
Well, I am, I'm the capital reserve side, I am gonna be giving, um, you've got an act vote from that tanker that we presented to you earlier.
That was a pretty, um, right, that was, how much, it was what, five, five fifty to, for the tanker?
Um, including equipment.
Oh, including equipment, including equipment.
We've got it broken down for probably at least purchase, if we've got anything else.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be, I'll be giving that to Karen.
No, she left.
Um, she will be getting that, we've already got all our numbers and everything, and I know they were talking to me today about timeline, if we were to get this program in in March.
Okay, good. How soon we can get it?
He has two coming in January and two coming in March, all the same rate, yeah, so it's.
So we're hoping that he'll put our name on the March one? Yeah, alright, okay, doesn't need a down payment? We don't have.
Send him a couple hundred.
Send him a couple hundred bucks to hold it for us.
I mean.
Yeah.
We've been, I mean, we've been in contact with him and stuff.
It's just an updated version of what we have.
They deal with that, they deal with this kind of stuff all the time.
You were not moved to know?
No.
Just call him up and say, what's the low down on the no down? That customers walk in and say, back up, what's the low down on the no down? What are you talking about? I missed it.
Alright, but that will be in capital, good, so you're gonna work on the doors and get that, and let me know, and I can stop. Okay, so we can have it for October, okay, awesome, what's next? We're, we're done with you guys?
Emergency management.
Oh, we're not done?
No, they're emergency management.
Oh, yeah, number two.
Emergency.
It's okay, the emergency management is, is five thousand dollars, it's been in there for five thousand dollars for the last however many years, and this is obviously used in case of emergencies.
It's used, it's used for emergency management stuff, so whether, like, last year we bought that trailer that we can utilize if we bring, um, barricades and stuff around.
Yes. Yeah.
We need to, and it's for A to B places, if we can't get to places at the event, like what just happened down south.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's what that trailer was for, um, so then it'll be, you know, we, I don't, I don't think any off the top of my head right now is what I might be using it for next year, but I think there should be.
Scary.
And that we could, uh, usually update, it needs to be updated.
Yeah, yeah. Well, obviously, the school getting the generator takes a lot of pressure off of trying to figure out what we're going to do, cause we have no place to put.
So what do you have left in that account now?
She spent thirty bucks.
I don't think.
You haven't spent anything, no?
We have, um, it's not like a savings account, so they've only spent thirty dollars out of the five thousand.
Oh, it was spent?
Yeah, I see that, I know, but I just, what she had left in it, is what I say.
Oh, actual thirty, sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't add up, it doesn't. And that doesn't, that doesn't increase, like, the five thousand from the year before?
Well, I understand that, but if they didn't use it, I was just wondering what they had left in that account.
Yeah. Yeah, well, five thousand minus thirty dollars.
Yeah, so, so why would we need another five thousand dollars? Why do we need another five thousand on top of the four hundred and seventy thousand?
No, 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 this is.
Staying at five thousand.
Huh?
It doesn't.
It doesn't roll over.
Doesn't roll over.
She's not request, requiring another five thousand, son, not asking for five grand more.
I'm just maintaining it at five thousand.
We just always keep five thousand in that account from one year to the next?
Okay, well, it just said, it says here, requested five thousand dollars, so, does that mislead me in any way, or what?
Yeah.
No, cause that's what they're requesting, they're requesting five thousand, that's their budget.
Nothing, Sonny, nothing rolls over, so that forty, four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars that's left will not be in there next year, it's, it'd be zero again, and we have to give them five thousand to be there, basically.
What they don't spend goes back into the, um, general fund.
General fund. Everyone has a request, everyone has their budgets and a request, that one is kind of a, i- i- if, if, if I need it, I use it for emergency purposes only. This year they haven't, but hey, if the year's not over yet, they may tap into it, we have a big storm, and they may need to use those emergency management funds. But it doesn't go to a, a separate account at the end of the year, doesn't roll over as those, as unspent rev, uh, unspent budget.
And I think, I think that by law we have to have an emergency management plan, correct? I mean, that's, that's.
We have a plan, yeah.
A plan, but I think you have to have an emergency management account with something in it, just in case of emergencies.
Well, ask, ask Mr. Turgeon.
This is an apartment.
We still have one more budget.
Oh, we do?
We still have Patrick's budget.
Oh, Patrick's budget, which number is that, three?
Three.
Number?
And, and can we just do motions to say, um, that you approve, you know, each one as discussed, cause there could still be change.
Alright.
So if someone wants to make a motion for the fire department and second as discussed, as well as the emergency management, and then we'll do the guys after.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fire department budget as discussed, and changes made as discussed.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposition, okay, and then I'll make a motion to accept the emergency management as discussed, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to number three, which is general government building.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Have them three, and again, we made these in order so that every time we have a group, it's just right after the.
Yeah, got it.
Flip back and forth a hundred times, um, I'm just gonna step out for two seconds, I'm never gonna get out of here to get my child, so I have to find somebody to get her, so it's gonna be two minutes.
I know, that's what I'm doing, I was texting the bus driver to see if she'd drop Anthony off here.
But you guys can talk, you don't need me.
Alright, okay, Patrick?
Well, good afternoon, um, what we have presented to you today is the same budget that we presented in two thousand twenty four,
Twenty three.
Uh, except for the increases in utilities and, and contracts, we didn't ask for anything new, uh, we didn't try to increase any line items, uh. Uh, so what we're trying to do is maintain what we requested in, what was the budget, two hun, two thousand twenty four, if you look at it, if you, uh, the requested would be a three percent increase from two thousand twenty four, and that's all driven by utilities, fuel, uh, stuff that we cannot control, contracts. Um, our, if you look, go back to our default budget of two thousand twenty three, it's a four percent increase, so.
Pretty cut and dry.
So you're actually, you're coming out a little bit ahead, actually.
Well.
Even with the less percentage.
And I asked what service contract in the computer network, which is line two fifty, went up crazy, or went up at least like twenty grand, it looks like, or something?
Um, I believe there's, um, a thing in the.
Is there? I tried to flip through something like crazy.
Um, no, sorry.
This is M three sixty five.
Yeah, so out of all these contracts, I was just wondering which one went up, like, the hundred sixteen thousand IT contract, the ten thousand Breeze line? Like, was it one specifically, or they all just kind of make that big increase?
I, I believe, well, a part of that, I believe, oh, no, that one.
See, this lining, this line include, includes items for our IT service contract.
Yeah.
M three sixty five advanced network security password manager, which is Breeze line.
Those are software, those are the, the.
Okay. Then web hosting maintenance.
Yeah, that was probably a estimate based on.
The total bill.
It's gonna be twelve hundred now, instead of six hundred.
Right, based on what we talked about.
Thousand, cause I didn't have good numbers of that.
Yeah, and then GoDaddy.
Yeah, I was just wondering which contract had such an increase like that, I just, for knowledge, not for care about budget wise.
Probably the one that's going on the business.
Yeah, GoDaddy is usually a dummy.
So, so, within that line is Breeze line, and then the certified computer that we use, um, I think we're still waiting on a contract for that.
Sharon, do you have a question?
Yes, um, your truck.
That was my next question too, come on.
Is there, then any?
We did not request money for our truck.
I was gonna ask if you got an estimate one, so.
Okay, right now, I mean, yesterday we had to start over at normal point, just on this, our truck is ten years old, okay, it has a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. It's, it's running well, it does have, uh, rust on it, uh, because of the feeling that we're getting from the public that we work with every day, we didn't feel that it was in our best interest to try and replace the truck this year. We wanted to get back onto a budget that passed, make the truck go one more year if we have to, uh, and then present in the next year's budget, uh, of replacement.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna keep putting Band-Aids on something, that's a good idea.
But, but the problem is, if the rust, how are you gonna get it inspected if it's rusty?
Well, the, the rust is around the wheel wells.
Oh, is it surface?
Yeah, so as long as you can't stick your finger through it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not like it's, it's not the frame?
No, it's, it's not the frame, the doors aren't gonna fall off, it's around the wheel wells in which, when Kyle and I, uh, purchased the, uh, flares.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Covered up, it's covered up, you can walk by it and wouldn't know, we know it's there.
Alright. Yeah.
Uh, uh, if the truck was breaking down every week, then that would be another issue, uh, but it's not, I mean, yes, does it need to be replaced? I just don't think it's, our judgment is that we need to see if we can make any modifications.
I'm also uncomfortable.
It's probably unwarranted from saying bum your butter from.
I'm also just uncomfortable reading the line that you guys have to use personal trucks occasionally, which creates, you know, liability for you guys and us.
When the truck does go down DPW, when it goes down for repair, we always borrow our truck from the.
DPW.
So we're, we're not like, we're.
Stranded.
Stranded, exactly.
Alright, alright, well, um, we appreciate that, alright, because sometimes we don't feel we get such loyalty and understanding, obviously, and, um, you know, as long as you feel that it's gonna be safe enough for another year, that's my only concern.
Works out, long distance.
Alright, okay, um, do we have any, do you want me to go by sections, or do we have any questions on this?
Yeah, I think we can approve this whole budget.
We asked about the questions on the line two five zero, the network, and Alicia's back, so she can answer that.
Right.
Yeah, so I had, just to put in a number, plugged in what our current IT contract gave us, how, how, to use the, you know.
If we don't change.
If we don't change matters, that's what their proposal is, um, for twenty five is the one sixteen eight eighty.
Okay.
And, um, we also have, you know, the Breeze line is the ten eighty.
Yeah.
Um, oh, and the other reason is I added that maintenance, the two thousand, and I might need to change that down, um, I didn't know at the time, and I agree, is how much our new website would be for the yearly maintenance, but we've gone with the, the one that's the twelve hundred, I can reduce that maybe, um, but I think I would leave it now, just cause I also don't know if the IT.
Yeah, no, I was just more or less for knowledge, wondering.
Why the increase, that's why, but definitely the two thousand for the new web host and their IT contract did go up from,
Yeah.
Um, I think it was, what was it, ninety five last year, and I was one sixteen, so there is an increase, I think it was one, ninety five.
Can I ask you on line two ten what first light is? It's in your narrative, so I just didn't know what that was.
Uh, first they just, they do our long distance, Steve?
Our first light does the long.
Our long distance telephone service.
Well, you got it in here, on his budget, you're showing, and Patrick's, which is work, Patrick's work cell, long distance first light, a thousand twenty five a month average. That's quite a phone bill.
Um, that's for all government.
Oh.
Oh, that's a toll bill, oh, okay, but they got it here for y'all.
That's for all.
Phone.
Why, I, I don't, I don't, I don't read well, but I read it six times.
Government buildings, Patrick only has really a few lines in this budget, um, but.
Everything just filters through him.
Yeah.
Covers most buildings.
All those are shit called a Patrick.
Like, that's a crazy phone bill.
John was, John was wondering what you were doing for a thousand bucks a month on your phone.
Yeah, who ain't wrong? You hit that right on the head.
That makes more sense now.
I did.
So our current contract with IT is one oh three, and then there was one, one sixteen.
Thank you, yeah, that's a big jump right there.
Two thousand. And, yes, no, Patrick's work cell is in there, but it's.
See, you gotta watch them things, you gotta watch.
It's called in there, so it's Patrick's first comma.
I saw the comments, I asked what first light was.
I did. I thought she was in a Chris Kapan, but I think she's Jewish.
Show on.
Well, she slipped that one in on Patrick.
He's still back on two ten.
And I don't know if you guys have already talked about this, but, um, I did have Steve forecast our electric bills, because, um, as you can see, maybe not so much in this line, but our electric, I, we have forecasted that we're gonna overs, over expend our electric lines this year. Um, a majority at some of our, you know, our sewers, pump stations, and PD, and the fire, so we did bump up the electric line. Um, so we basically added what we think we're gonna end up at the year, and we went through the buffer of five to seven percent of an increase, that may not be enough.
Yeah, they're, ever sources, ever sources.
They're all over the map, they're all over the map. Yeah.
We've locked in our rate with Constellation at the, um, the zero point one one, but it's the ever source side, the distribution side that is so expensive.
But once in my life, I'm glad I'm on, um, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, because it's brutal.
Yeah. The distribution went up, it was about thirty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can provide you with what Steve forecasted, and, and where we're kinda trending to end up the year, and, you know, his projections as to where we should put it, and certainly, maybe when I get another month or two in, I, I can re-project and maybe change those numbers up just to cover us, but I do see at the end of the year, we'll overspend some of those lines. I think some of them already have, I mean, we're at six and seven already, and I've been using about the. Anything else that this meeting that I have to, um, I also moved, for some reason, the elevator inspection was in with service contracts into the PDV. I moved it to where it really should have been, which is in the middle buildings for permanent, so if that, that line looks high, the other one went down a little bit, so I just moved it where it should.
Just moved it around.
Yeah, just moved it around where it should be properly accounted for, so that you have a good idea of what this building really is costing us.
Yeah. 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 Good.
Um. Anything else that I could.
Is there any other questions on this?
No.
Any questions, Sharon, on this one?
Um, just give me one second.
He does a great job, these guys.
Well, um. Questioning, I'm wondering if we should add, and only because our truck went to the garage over the weekend, and we just got it back, and my car is not gonna be fixed that. You have a line for vehicle repair for two thousand dollars.
That, you have a line for vehicle repair for two thousand dollars. You don't know if that number's a little bit low, given the fact that you're gonna.
I mean, so far this year, all we've had was, uh, thunder flares, uh, two tires and, um, the starter.
Is that your guys' only vehicle, that marine truck?
Yeah. But then usually with D P W, there is one extra.
Yeah, I meant for us wanting the repairs for.
Well, I just know, like, like I said, it cost us eleven hundred dollars to get the pickup truck, and it was just a couple of front end parts, and still to buy tires is another thirteen hundred dollars. So two thousand just seemed a little low to me for a full year of vehicle maintenance.
And the truck just went through state inspection here in September.
Okay, yeah.
I think the only thing we need to do, uh, to get ready for winter is we need to repair tires in the rear.
And you're probably gonna have, you'll have that in, do you have that money, those monies in your existing budget for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 so you're not even getting into that.
Does your repair, he has spent fifteen hundred dollars already, so is that, I don't know what's left to spend.
Got tires.
Yeah, we'll let you, we'll, we'll let you buy snow tires. Awesome. Um, can I have a motion in regards to this budget? Obviously, um, it's just as discussed.
I'll make the motion accepting grounds budget.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, no, I just have one question before I forget. A couple of years ago, and I'm thinking, a couple of years ago, we had put on the ballot the generator for Shaker Road replacement, and I know Craig has left. Um, because I've noticed the generator people have been there quite a bit. That's a sewer pump station generator.
I think, I think they just went around and went to every generator.
Oh, so it was at like a ma.
It was a full, it was a full maintenance, that was last week.
Oh, wasn't, okay. Yeah, my question is, is he planning to bring that back on? Because I know that generator was on three, four years ago to be replaced, because it's old.
He should, and I know that he had asked me a question of why was it on the ballot when we have the funds? I don't know, I have to look back to see.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know why either.
Plan that was attached to that. Um, certainly, if you have, that would be a part of repair and maintenance.
That's sort of, of the sewer, which should be paid out of sewer, you would think.
Of the sewer. That I think that you would, should be able to use those capital reserves as you need fit, but I will look into it, and if you can, then he should just fix it, and if it needs to be on the ballot, then it needs to be on the ballot.
Yeah, I just.
I have one general question too.
What's that?
Um, is it, you're, is it?
I didn't give time.
You're amazing. Is it?
And I'm expecting.
It's gonna talk about.
Ah, yeah, bribe, bribe, bribe.
I'm still gonna ask you hard questions, okay? With solid waste, are, are we, we're paying more for recycling than waste, right?
You're awesome, thank you.
Not per tons.
I think recycling is still less, yeah, part of why the ordinance is to require people to recycle, they're mandated to recycle, because the recycling is less expensive per ton.
All right, it must have been spread the last, one thing I've seen.
It, it's weird, because years ago, recycling was far more expensive than trash, but now.
Not, not solid, not, not dollar amount, but dollar per ton, I mean.
Yeah.
I could give you, then you raise, but typically recycling is cheaper per, um, so it should.
Yeah, if you just see that, just to make sure, because I, I felt like it was kind of, I thought we were paying more for recycling, I'm like, this is kind of pointless.
No, no. And don't forget, we always get that, the monies back from the tonnage.
Do we?
Yeah.
So.
It costs them to sell the stuff.
Host fees, host fees, host fees.
We get about, yeah, five thousand a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is a host fee? I was trying to read that, host, yeah, what is a host fee, I mean, I was trying to read and understand it, but.
Host, host.
So. Well, if you look to sure.
I did, but I still couldn't understand what we were doing.
We allow them to have that planned there.
Too many meetings.
So they, yeah, okay, that's all, that's all, that's all they're paying as far as that, okay. I didn't know if it was more in depth than just them being there.
We are so recording.
Nope.
But it has to do with how much gets disposed.
Yeah, yes, it does.
How much outside tonnage that other communities or other businesses bringing to the, into the, um, into Belmont, and they say, okay, we collected five thousand tons, here's, you know, that ton, that tonnage on.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
And we collect about, and then last year we collected sixty thousand in host fees, the year before, I don't know, I don't have the total, forty-five, and so far, we've collected this year forty-one. So, and then we just use that as an offset, I would say, to the, to the.
We try to, we try to make any deal we can for revenues to.
No, no, I just, I thought we were paying more for recycling, and that's why it was throwing me off for a second.
Yeah, the recycling is, so for the, um, to collect good garbage, we've spent one sixty-eight to collect, to be recycling, we've spent one fifteen. And then to dispose of the trash, we've spent one forty-two, and then to dispose of the recycling, we've spent thirty thousand.
People don't realize how expensive junk trash is.
Cheaper to dispose. So you add those two, so disposal and collection of recycling is one forty-six, disposal and collection of trash is three eleven.
Thank you, guys. Grab a piece of pizza.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, please, bro. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And then I, um, just some things that I just wanted to, as, to point to your budgets. Um, I know I had pointed to the fact that I gave you that percentage of the increase over a default and then the percentage over what was requested, just so you could see visually those two numbers, when we're always used to seeing the requested. And then the difference column that you see on all the pages is the difference between the defaults.
Yeah.
Um, and then I highlighted in red what was a, um, an increase to the budget, um. And then you have like a reporting box, if there's any.
So when I get ready to start going to the budget meetings, you're gonna update this, so I'm gonna have this.
Yeah, you'll get a new one, yeah.
You get a new binder.
So that I, so I have the same number, okay.
Yes, yes, you'll have.
You'll have the pretty one with the cover page.
Well, we've already laid topics with most of these factors, thirteen binders, so it's up to you.
Either way.
You want to sit in, when you're done, we can reuse as much as possible.
Yeah, yeah, some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the detail, the detail won't, but the chief will, yes.
Yeah, all right, I just want to make sure that, because I tend to.
And our next meeting is on Monday at five here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have my calendar written down.
Are we good to end Thursday with the live recording?
Yes, I think we are.
Sharon, motion to a Sharon.
Motion to a Sharon, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I don't think there'll be any opposition. And you.
Womp, womp, womp. We live and learn.
Sharon's not answering, so.
Well, this is.